Well, good evening. I'm Mary Ann Edwards, honored to be the mayor of Temecula. And I am going to call this city council meeting to order. And you will notice that we are here in the council chambers, and there are people sitting in the chamber tonight, and we are all ecstatic that we can meet in person. It has been a very long Zoom time. So, welcome. We're going to have our invocation first, and that will be given to us by city manager Erin Adams, followed by the flag salute. So if you'll stand for the invocation, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would you please bow your head with me? Dear me, Father Lord, we give you thanks for this day. We thank you for the democracy that's built into local government. And, Lord, we pray for wisdom and discernment for the city council, for the business at hand. Lord, I also ask for your protection of city staff and our first responders in police and fire, that you'd continue to look out after them as they keep our city safe. And, Lord, as we are coming out of this very difficult time, Lord, we know people are still hurting and have yet to recover. And, Lord, we lift them up, and we ask for your provision, your healing on this city, on the state, on this country, Lord. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Erin. If you place your right hand over your heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. You all look good. Madam City Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Alexander.
Aye.
I see that you are here. Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Schwank.
Hello, I'm here.
And Councilmember Stewart is absent. And Mayor Edwards.
Here. So, I don't want to embarrass you, but as long as you've been with us, this is Jessica's first full meeting with everybody in the chamber. And I didn't even think about it. So, you pushed your first button, so that was really good. Really good. Okay, so, we have no presentations this evening, so we're going to move on to board and commission reports. And coming up first, Community Services Commission, Eric Levine. How does it feel to be sitting over there again?
Feels great.
Isn't it?
Glad to be back. Good evening, everyone. Just a quick reminder, I think we have a slide there, it is. So fireworks will light the sky on July 4th at 9:00 p.m. They'll be launching over the Ronald Reagan Sports Park and will last approximately 20 minutes. Enjoy the musical simulcast on KATY 101.3. And while we won't have vendors or live entertainment this year, staff looks forward to welcoming everyone back to the park in 2022. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. And we have Tiffany Baker, who is the chair of our Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Commission. How are you this evening?
A little nervous. This is my first time as well.
This is your first time up here too, isn't it?
But you know, there's grace, so I'm just going to take it. So hello, and thank you all for the honor. I'm here to report on the Ready Commission. We held our meeting on June 10th. We received an overview of the proclamation that was issued to the city council during your meeting on Tuesday night. And the recipients of that proclamation was TVUSD, Great Oak Gay and Straight Alliance, and Temecula Valley Pride, Intersectional Group, students and representatives, and facility advisors. And then we also received the update on the commission was able to go in and review your ready initiative. And first of all, I just want to say, good job. Good job for -- I'm not going to cry today, okay? We deal with a lot, but we have a city that cares. And we have a city council that cares. And you show up for the hard things. And when we looked at your equity initiative, it gave us a great springboard. And we also have great, great, great commissioners. They dug in. They dug in for this city. And they let their light shine, and their strengths came forth. And we just sat, and we just talked about the city that we want to raise our kids in. So, thank you. Thank you, thank you, city council. And why do I want to cry, Jesus? But this is a good thing, Temecula, and it makes me proud to be a Temeculan. I proudly say that. We go through things together because we live here together. And last but not least, our next meeting, Jesus, why am I crying?
Because you're a passionate person.
And it's just so good. It's good. What we're doing is good. The good outweighs it all.
Yep.
It outweighs it all. And God has need of us to do this. And our next meeting is July 8th. And that concludes my report, and I am honored to be here. Thank you.
And you did a great job for your first meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to our public safety report. And it's going to be tonight Riverside County Sheriff's Department. Hi there, Zachary Hall.
Good evening. We'll go through the calls for service here on the presentation. Difference between '21 and '19, year-to-date. Remember, I'm skipping 2020. Easier to compare and more reasonable to compare to '19. Thirty-four thousand nine hundred twelve to thirty-two thousand three hundred eighty-six. In the month of May, we went on sixty-six hundred and sixty-seven calls for service. Compared to 2019, it's sixty-seven seventy-four. Average response times in May 2021 as compared to '19, five point three, five-three for your priority one, six point six-four in May for priority two, fifteen point six-two to fifteen point eight-one. Your priority three response time, twenty-six point four-five to twenty-six point eight-four. Priority four, forty-one sixty-one to forty-three seventy-eight. You can see they're staying pretty consistent. Part one crimes. This is a year-to-date. Compare it again, 21-19. For your total violent crimes and your murders, one to zero, forcible rape, nine to three, robbery, twenty-three to thirty-eight, aggravated assaults is one oh seven to ninety-nine. Your property crimes, burglary, one seventy-one to one thirty-eight, motor vehicle theft, one fifty-five, with a hundred and eight recovered, one hundred and thirty-one to one thirteen. Your thefts are seven forty-three compared to the nine nineteen, and zero arsons compared to two that we had in 2019. Before I continue to the next slide, is there anything on here that you may have questions about or you'd like me to change this data up to anything else or add or take anything off?
Anyone?
Or anything explained?
No, you're good.
Moving on to some of our proactive enforcement that I know you're interested in, Metro Team statistics for May 2021. Felony arrests or felony warrants served were 12. They made 78 misdemeanor arrests, arrested 16 people for driving under the influence, issued 306 parking citations, and conducted 74 bar checks. And again, that's just in Old Town. Moving on to the Traffic Team citations or activity. So, total citations they rode in May, 1,251 compared to the 1,247 in '19. Eight hundred and forty-six hazard citations, 212 non-hazard, 193 parking citations. And in our collisions, in the month of May, we had 69 compared to 67 in 2019. Our injury collisions were 26, our non-injury 43, and they made 47 DUI arrests. And unless you have any questions, that will end the public safety report.
Thank you, Captain Hall. All right. So, do we have any public comments, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have five public comments.
Okay.
Would you like me to read the rules?
Yes, please do.
A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For all public hearing or business items on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the city clerk or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting by the city clerk. Email comments must be submitted to randy.joe@temeculacca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Email comments shall be subject to the same rules as would otherwise govern in-person public comments. And the first speaker is Bob Cal.
Well, I think so. He's been here since five o'clock. You got here. I mean, you were here pretty early.
Okay. Originally, I was going to talk about the -- something else, but I'm going to go to the critical race theory because I believe it to be -- I'm sorry, Tiffany, but I believe it to be a racist theology, much like Hitler's Nazi Germany socialist regime. It kills people. When we single out, say, myself or other white people for being evil, more evil than another, it is racist. Recently, we have seen some noteworthy murders on innocent white children by non-white people. Is this due to CRT? I say yes. Look at the cases, Victoria Smith, BLM advocates murdered a white three-year-old, Victoria Smith. Daisy Paulson, 14-year-old Daisy Paulson in Fargo, North Dakota, was stabbed, beaten, and strangled for 25 minutes by a 23-year-old black man, Cash Gernan, an 18-year-old black suspect, for no reason sneaking into the house where four-year-old Cash Gernan was sleeping and kidnapped and stabbed, stabbed him several times and left him to bleed to death in Dallas, Texas. And there are many more that I could put on here, but I don't have the time. There are very -- these are very recent events. You know that diagram you showed here with the equality and the equity? You know, the equality is where one of the tall guys in the picture could carry the small guy on his back. That's what we did when we were small. That was equality and equity. So in the case of equity, let's take a basketball game. Your definition of equity would require the special legs we put on the smaller players for everyone to be equal in a basketball game so that the lesser players are given or the lesser players given a handicap so that the game comes out where everybody wins. Also, I just want to say the Ready Commission's definition of justice, there is no justice if I'm removing the boundaries or the fence. Ask why the fences are in the first place. Is there -- it's there so people don't run down, interfere with the baseball game. That would be an injustice to allow them to run down to the baseball game and interfere with the game. So, the people who promote the CRT, I think, are promoting an evil program. They're not evil themselves, but they don't understand that we are the brunt. We will be the brunt of a racist attack. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
And the next speaker is Lisa Skinner.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Skinner, and I've been a financial supporter of Temecula, businesses and nonprofits for the past 20 years. I've been fighting for the underdog most of my life, and today's no different. This pandemic has created many underdogs, and arguably hardest hit has been our small businesses. Small businesses employ nearly 48% of the workforce in this country. Small business owners of every race, religion, gender, and political association should be revered and protected at all costs. The success of this country literally depends on it. We now know, because of Fauci's emails, that he lied to our elected officials and to the American people. And as our representatives are calling for his termination in the Fire Fauci Act, we now know that the lockdowns were most likely ineffective in containing this virus. A recent article in the Wall Street Journal and other publications would concur. We now know, because of Fauci's emails, that masks were unnecessary. The virus was created in the Wuhan lab using gain-of-function funded with the help of our tax dollars, and the virus quite possibly was released intentionally. It is a known fact that the CDC did, in fact, inflate the death rates. All the things that many across the country have been saying from the beginning, yet local and state governments chose to believe what they were being told despite clear evidence contradicting the narrative. Cities and states across the nation began analyzing the data themselves and coming to their own conclusions based on the actual data. And those cities and states began putting the rights and liberties of their citizens first. The Temecula City Council is guilty of choosing to follow tyrannical mandates instead of defending the rights and liberties of the citizens. That is not how you uphold your oath to office and why there's been a call for Mary Ann to step down. Mandates are not law. Governors don't make laws. I trust you all will remember that the next time with the next round of lockdowns happens because they will happen. I will keep pushing for complete transparency on how the 14 million has been spent as I feel every single business owner in this valley needs to know what financial choices were made while many of them struggled to keep the doors open and still others lost their businesses forever due to the tyrannical lockdowns. Make no mistake, the lockdowns and the restrictions will come around again. How will you all protect our small businesses the next time? It was upsetting to hear firsthand from an Old Town Temecula restaurant owner that he and a small group of others got specific direction from Sheriff Bianco on how to fight the lockdown mandates. Yet other Asian friends of mine who also own businesses got visits from every three and four letter agency reminding them of what the laws were. While I can't prove there was favoritism shown to Old Town Temecula restaurants, nor can I prove the Asian restaurant owners were singled out, it sure is one of those things that makes you go, hmm. The citizens you serve
Madam Mayor, that's three minutes.
Expect you all to uphold your oath to office and defend every citizen's right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Suzanne Lane.
Good evening. Thank you so much for opening up for public comments. Okay, I am sorry, this is a hot topic. I'm going to speak the truth in love. But I believe critical race theory and diversity inclusion equity are two sides of the same coin. The philosophy divides people while at the same time claims to unite them. No good can come from it. We are told whites are oppressors, blacks and minorities are victims. This can only breed hatred and resentment. It's based on the color of skin. So apparently, we've gone back to pre-civil rights area. The U.S. is a unique nation. The thing that links us together is the tenants of the American creed, the American political philosophy. This is the only thing that truly unites us. It gives us our national identity, and it solidifies the concept of nationhood. We're to be a melting pot. The CRT and DIE, as I call it, interpretation of diversity, is completely misguided, and it leads to increased division and being used to undermine the American culture. It pits one group against another. True diversity doesn't bully and force people to accept another's lifestyle. That's conformity. Real diversity is that all citizens, regardless of race, religion, skin color, et cetera, are all afforded equal opportunity, that we coexist well together, we respect one another, we realize we're all in this together in one nation. The DIE model is supposed to develop policies that advance diversity, inclusion, and equity for diverse groups of people. But we are all different in many ways. There's no end to what differentiates us. Their inclusiveness is only for that, for those that are labeled as part of the diverse classes of people. If you're not in the diverse category, then inclusion is optional. Essentially, their own words are discriminatory in an attempt to elevate one population over the other. I could make a good argument that this is a clear violation of the Title VII Civil Rights Act of 1964. The most dangerous part of the whole DIE is equity. They say equity is promoting justice and impartiality and fairness, but fairness is ill-defined. How do you ensure equity outcomes when we all have free will? We all have different talents, abilities, desires, circumstances. Therefore, the idea of equity is just insane. Students will either study or not. Should they each have equitable grades and outcomes? Some families, they may save money for education for their kids. Others may not be able to. Some may spend wildly. Some may need to take out loans. Should we just eliminate the loan because it's deemed unfair by the powers that be? Some employees, they may work hard, others may not. Are companies supposed to put policies into place that motivate the slacker to work as hard as the other person? Or are we simply supposed to give equitable outcomes as a basis of pay? And how is that any different from communism? So, look at the policies that they call equitable. Universal healthcare, universal basic income, universal college, universal childcare, on and on and on. It's kind of funny how they all -- things that are considered equitable are all directly in line with the left-wing position. So, please wake up. Please wake up. Unity cannot be achieved by division. So, thank you very much.
The next speaker is Mark Lane.
Good evening, Mr. Lane.
Good evening. Thank you, guys. Wow, this is different. I haven't been up in the city council in a long time. Last time was probably 20 years ago, something like, oh, boy. So I had a whole lot of stuff that I was going to, but I only got three minutes, so let me cut to the chase. I really appreciate being able to speak in front of you guys today. I'm here because I have a couple of concerns about what went on in the city council during this pandemic. And I'm sure, you know, you guys are here with no mask on. Isn't that excellent? That is really excellent. Masks was one of the things I wanted to talk about. The other thing was the Ready Commission. And I wanted to be able to address them and say, boy, I'd love to be informed on that type of thing, okay? Let's talk about masks without getting into the hassle, whether they're good or not. Okay, the fact of the matter is, we were mandated in this state to do that. I think Mayor Edwards just said, you know, we didn't have a mask mandate in Temecula, but, you know, the state said, better do it or you're not going to get some money. And so I've emailed the council those thoughts before that said, you know what, couldn't we have done something? You know, with the people of Temecula, be able to mitigate something like that. My comment was, hmm, maybe, you know, that's about 125 bucks a person in Temecula. If the council came out and asked the city people if they would want to help them out so we didn't have to wear masks, maybe that would have been a way to go. It's a different type of an aspect, but it's coming to the people, and it's asking the people what they want and not just making it look like it's a unilateral decision by the city council. Now, I know these things get put on so that people can see them from the city, but it's not always that easy to see them all the time, especially in the Zoom criteria that we were in, okay? The Ready Commission was another concern because it was, at least from my information, it was unilaterally approved by you guys. But I didn't know anything about it, and I'm a resident of the city. And not to say it's a good thing or a bad thing because I really don't know, and you guys have just started, what's going on with this. But my point being is the people of this city need to know. And they need to know what they're getting into, and they need to know so they can be part of it. And I don't see that transparency. And maybe it's because I don't have the access to the things I need to have the access to. But I don't, and I can speak for other people in my community, in my area, at least where I live. They're not seeing it either. That was my take on that. Look, we often hear politicians say they want to empower the people. Well, that's so that we can do things. That's not the way it is, or it seems. Governments derive -- they're just powers from the people, from us. And that's why I'm imploring, you know, that you discuss this with the people. Government may not do a lot of things, including impede your speech. We empower the government. The government doesn't empower us. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The next speaker and last in-person speaker is Sylvia Gray. Madam Mayor, after that, I do have one email comment as well.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening. Need to -- yeah.
I've been a resident of Temecula for almost 30 years.
You need to step closer.
Yes.
There you go.
My name is Sylvia Gray, and I've been a resident of Temecula for almost 30 years. And I'm just here to ask you not to accept the vaccine passports. That is so frightening. It's just so frightening for people to be manipulated that way. I'm against the vaccines because I'm afraid that Fauci lied and, like the email says. And this has been all done deliberately to bring the virus here, just to manipulate us and make us get the vaccine. And I'm totally against that. I think it's -- it's -- I just don't have the words, total manipulation. And I don't want to be manipulated like that. And I just ask you, please, don't accept the vaccine passports or whatever they call it. That's just, I don't want to think that I'm in Germany in the era of Hitler, that they want to mark us in some way. So, please, don't give in. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, Madam Mayor, I do have one public comment that was emailed in. I do not have a name. It is just from a good citizen. And it says, "Thank you for reading this during tonight's meeting. Understand, we, the people, elected you to uphold your constitutional oath to represent us. We need 100% transparency in the spending of the COVID funds. Governors do not make laws, and our constitution is the law of our land. We know orders and mandates are only for federal and state employees, which you are, and we, the people, are not. Removing our rights to breathe oxygen and attempting to force us to wear a suffocation device and breathe our detox gas has you practicing medicine without a license. Under no circumstances will we allow any sort of vaccine passport or any of the sort. We are being peaceful about this, and we are giving you a chance to fix your mistakes. We cannot be peaceful for much longer. We are ready to see you uphold your oaths and help protect us all from enemies, both foreign and domestic." And, Madam Mayor, that completes all of the public comments for tonight.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, do we have any city council reports? No? Oh, my goodness. All right, then, moving on. We have the consent.
Madam Mayor.
Erin.
But Councilmember Alexander, I believe you did have a slide.
Did you?
Yeah, there we go. Sorry.
Let me go back a screen. There you go. I'm sorry, Jess.
No, that's okay. I'm still getting -- still getting used to this whole thing, not being in the movie. It's kind of nice.
You're doing fine.
All right, so one of the things I wanted everybody to know about is we have just developed a new webpage for the city here. And I believe, Erin Adams, we're going to also be putting it out with the app with the city. Is that correct?
That's the hope, is eventually, this is still a work in progress, but it will connect it with the city app, and we can promote it that way as well, yeah.
Absolutely. So to give you guys a little bit more insight of what this is, is one of the things, as I work for a nonprofit, volunteering for most of us is in our heart. And so I know getting out there sometimes, having children or at any age, it's important for us to volunteer. And it's trying to find where the need is. And so one of the things that we had come up with is the fact, okay, can we have one portal to send all of our nonprofits in the city in order for all of the residents to go there and find places to volunteer? It's really important that we're the hands and the feet here. You know, more people, less work. And so it really is going to build our community. And I know our high schoolers, and I'm pretty sure the most of the middle schoolers as well, depending upon the school, also has volunteer hours that they have to do. So I think this would be helpful for the families and also really for our kids to start learning some trades. I think it's so important that our children start getting out there and investigating what they're good at, what their giftings are, and where they are going to be steered in life. And this is just going to be a really good opportunity. So that being said, the residents can contact these nonprofit organizations directly to volunteer. These nonprofits are endorsed by the city. This website also lists opportunities that arise from time to time to volunteer within the city, either at city hall or special events, as an unpaid intern. If you are a nonprofit that provides services within the city of Temecula and meet the criteria, we ask you to reach out via email to provide information if you'd like to be listed. So currently, right now, we have how many, Erin, on there?
I think we were just north of 50 this morning. We know that's going to continue to grow as interest builds too.
Absolutely. So we're really excited. So we hope everybody can get on there and start looking around and just seeing how we can grow our city together, hand in hand. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jess. You know, along those lines, transparency was mentioned with some of the speakers. And we try very hard to make sure that we have transparency. So there are public meetings before major decisions are made by the council. A ready commission was all done in public over time. We discussed the need for it, and we discussed the application process and how, all in city council meetings. And, you know, if you want to be more informed, you can go on the city website, and you can sign up for notices. And so you'll, you'll receive notices about things that are going on in the city. So you might want to consider that, you know, if you want to get involved, as you just said. So thank you. Okay, we are at Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolution. Number two, approve action minutes of June 8, 2021. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve city treasures report as of April 30, 2021. Number five, approve annual renewal of city insurance policies. Okay, that takes a whole page just on its own. And, number six, approve non-financial revisions to existing labor agreements. Number seven, adopt resolution extending the temporary expanded dining retail program in Old Town until June 30, 2022. Number eight, approve second assignment, assumption, and amendment to the Joint Community Facilities Agreement for Temecula Public Financing Authority Facilities District, number 03-02, which is Roar Paw Ranch. Number nine, approve summary vacation of a drainage easement located on Lot 22 of tract map 21820. And that is all, if you don't want to pull anything, I need a motion and a second. We get to use buttons.
Move approval.
So actually, I will go ahead and enter the mover and the second. No need for anyone to do that. So I have a motion from Councilmember Matt Ron. And the second is, I'm sorry, I missed the second.
Well.
We don't have one yet.
We didn't have, yeah.
I'll second. I did it on my, on my computer.
Thank you, Zach.
Second.
Did it go?
No, we had a lot of button pushing. All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Ron and a second by Councilmember Schwank. And we can go ahead and start the voting now. And that is unanimous with Councilmember Stewart absent.
Okay, thank you, Randy. At this time, I'm going to reassess the Temecula City Council meeting to the scheduled meetings of the Temecula Community Services District, the Successor Agency to Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the Temecula Housing Authority, and/or the Temecula Public Financing Authority, which I like to call the T-P-A-F-A. And so, we are ready for community services.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'd like to call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you please let the record reflect that we are all still here, and Councilmember Stewart is absent? Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
Right. Thank you. I'll go ahead and dispense with the reading of those rules, and we will move on to our consent calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. Item number 10 is approve action minutes of June 8, 2021. 11, approve a five-year agreement with Silverman Enterprises, Inc., DBA BAS Security for Contracted Security Services. Item 12, approve agreement with Seaside Ice LLC, DBA Ice America, for the Old Town Temecula Outdoor Ice Skating Rink. And item 13, approve agreement with Shawna Sarnowski for photography services at various city events and programs. And with that, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Can I pull item 11 for, I'm sorry, 12?
Yes.
For discussion.
I was going to talk about that. I was going to talk about that. All right. So I need a motion to move the balance. We're pulling item 12.
Actually, I need a motion to move.
You want one, too? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We're all, we're all finding our strike. So I'll entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar. I'll move. And I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Second. All right. We'll go ahead and vote on that, and then we'll discuss 11.
Okay. So President Schwank, I have Director Ron with the motion, and Director Edwards with the second. And we will go ahead and start the voting now. And that is unanimous with Councilmember Stewart absent.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so item number 12 was pulled. Do you need a staff report, or?
No, not really. You know, gosh, I want to say it was maybe five years ago or so when we had the conversation. And part of my, I mean, not surprisingly, I'm not much of an ice skater. I know this is going to everybody, oh, really? Not much of an ice skater. But, but I like the concept. I like the idea. It's a great feature to have. But I also was a little, you know, five, six years ago, was a little put off by the cost. And so, you know, I had asked that we, you know, do our best to find sponsors for the event to help offset some of the costs and get donors and so forth. And, and that was, you know, ideally going to ramp up every year. And somehow, along that way, we never quite got there. We got some sponsors to help offset, but really, it didn't kind of do what I was hoping for. And so I was, I was hoping maybe we could revisit that conversation again this year and, and see if we can really push for it. I mean, look, I love the fact that the community services program, you know, invests, you know, these, these resources and efforts. But, you know, stuff like this, I think we should, you know, frankly, just do a bit of a better job bringing forward, you know, community sponsors and other forms of, of support. And we know they're out there. And it was working for a time, and then it got derailed a little bit, it seems like. So I'd just like to bring that concept forward and see if we can't make that part of the motion here tonight.
Yeah. I believe Director Hawkins may have a little bit to add, if you'd like.
Thanks for the opportunity. Staff is definitely monitoring this discussion, and we knew that sponsorship would come up. At this point, we haven't secured any sponsors. We actually don't have a date set for the install yet. So with this action, though, I think it's pretty clear that we will be seeking a return to getting some cost if rate of possible. So we hear you loud and clear.
And Mayor Protem Ron, if I, if I could add on to that just real quick. The number that's, that's outlined there, just, just for the benefit of the community, is, is a five-year number, not a one-year number. So you can divide that by five. And the negotiated amount also came about as a result of the for-profit rink needing to make a profit out in front. So what we're doing essentially is we're subsidizing a for-profit recreational element. So I just wanted to make that clarification out there. But we can absolutely pursue corporate sponsorships to take down the city's annual cost as we can.
Thank you.
That sounds great. May I add just one thing to add? Erin, do you think we would have to revisit the city policy as a whole with respect to donations and sponsorships? Or is this just something within TCSD? I, I think the current corporate sponsorship policy as written and approved by the council affords us this opportunity that Mayor Protem is asking about. If, if we want to get into beyond, with, I think it was with nonprofits and things that were carved out previously and stuff, then we're going to need to be back to revisit that policy. But I believe, as it stands today, Kevin, that, that we're in solid ground with, with current policy.
That's correct. That's inaccurate interpretation.
Okay.
And Zach, the idea behind that was that we did not want to take money out of circulation that would have normally gone to the nonprofits, especially at Christmas time, when they're buying toys and, you know, food baskets and things like that. So that's where that policy came from. And I think it's worked pretty well.
Right. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on item 12.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Madam City Clerk?
That passes unanimously with Councilmember Stewart absent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm still determined.
We'll get it. All right.
Old habit.
Do we have a director's report this evening?
Sure, Mr. President. Just some brief comments. You know, earlier in, in the month, the city manager announced a couple of organizational changes, including the Assistant City Manager, Greg Butler's retirement. In, in his statement, Erin reminded Team Temecula to thank Greg Butler for his years of service to the city of Temecula and the amazing friend and coworker he has been to us all. So although GB isn't here tonight, and by the way, GB stands for Google Butler, and I will be out of town for the next council meeting, I just wanted to publicly thank Greg, as many of us here in City Hall appreciated his exceptional ability, talent, and contributions. But I also wanted to underscore for the viewers what a better person, husband, and father he is, which makes filling his shoes kind of impossible, really. So I and others will simply pledge to walk in his footsteps, both personally and professionally, and every day, to make a positive difference along the way. So thanks, thanks, Greg. Congrats, and God bless. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Director Hawkins. General Matters report this evening?
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, sir. Board of Directors, anything? All right. Seeing nothing, we'll go and adjourn this meeting to our next regularly scheduled TCSD meeting, held on Tuesday, July 13. We are adjourned.
You want to start the next one? I owe you one. So, okay. All right. I'd like to call this meeting of the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency to order. Could we have the roll call, please?
Madam Mayor, I am noting that you are all present.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have any public comments?
We do not.
And we'll go to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency request specific items be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. Item number one, approve action minutes of June 8.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, motion and second.
And we can start voting. And that is unanimous with Councilmember Stewart absent.
Thank you very much. Executive Directors report, anything?
Nothing further tonight.
Nothing? Any directors? No? All right. Then I will adjourn the SARDA meeting and reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. And we have one business item. Item number 15, receive and file report on the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funding allocation to the city of Temecula.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll kind of tee this up, and then I'm going to hand it off to our Finance Director, Jennifer Hennessy. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, you know, there seems to be a great deal of confusion in the community with respect to the American Rescue Act, what the city's received, what the city hasn't received, federal funds in general. So hopefully, tonight, this, this presentation is receive and file. We'll walk the council, walk the community exactly what this is and what it isn't. So with that, I'd, I'd like to invite Jennifer Hennessy to, to give a brief presentation, and we'll make, both make ourselves available at the end if there's any questions.
Thanks, Erin. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Since the onset of the pandemic, there has been four separate relief programs to assist the city and the community to address the financial impacts of COVID-19. The Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, also known as the CARES Act, was signed into law in March of 2020 and provided for $2.2 trillion in economic stimulus. The state of California received $15.3 billion from this act and allocated $1.8 billion to cities and counties. Temecula received $1.3 million in CARES Act funding this fiscal year, which was used to reimburse the city for eligible COVID-related expenditures. Over $1.1 million of, of these funds were used for the fire department's response to medical aid calls. A total of $5 billion in federal CARES Act funds were allocated to the Community Development Block Grant Program, of which the city received just under $1.2 million directly, directly from the Department of Urban and Housing, Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. The city received $329,000 in the first round of CDBG-CV allocations. These funds were combined with $171,000 in general fund dollars to create the Temecula Assist Grant Program, which provided financial assistance to eligible businesses. The second round of CDBG-CV funds totaled $864,000 to the city and were used to provide emergency rental and mortgage assistance to eligible low and moderate income households and families. Additionally, a portion of these funds were allocated towards a homeless prevention program to assist those on the verge of becoming homeless. On March 11 of 2021, the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, was signed into law. This $1.9 trillion relief bill included $350 billion dedicated to state, local, territorial, and tribal governments. Temecula's allocation totals just over $14 million, and the remaining portion of this presentation tonight will dive deeper into this funding allocation and its eligible uses. And then finally, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, is the fourth source of relief funding available to the city. We have not yet received any FEMA funds to date, and we are in the process of finalizing a claim to submit to FEMA in the near future to recoup costs spent on COVID-related material supplies and equipment. The American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, was signed into law on March 11, as I mentioned, with a total of $350 billion in federal aid dedicated to state, local, territorial, and tribal governments. The city of Temecula's allocation will be just over $14 million, paid out in two tranches. The city has not yet received any ARPA funding. The first payment will be received shortly after the city completes the federal certification process in the coming weeks, and then the second half of the funding is paid 12 months later. Last month, the U.S. Department of Treasury released guidance on how these funds can be appropriated. The official guidance is called the interim final rule. However, it's not yet final. The Treasury Department is still taking comments on all aspects of the interim final rule through July 16, after which we expect an update to the guidance. The interim guidance outlines a variety of funding objectives to assist communities in their response to the pandemic, replace lost revenue in order to provide for continued public services, retain jobs, provide economic stabilization for households and businesses, and address systemic public health and economic challenges contributing to the disparate impacts of COVID-19. Many have asked, how has the $14 million figure been calculated? It was determined by the U.S. Treasury following a multi-factor formula used to determine CDBG funding allocations. This formula, formula looks not only at population, but also at poverty levels, housing overcrowding, and the age of housing in a community. Communities that are classified as metropolitan cities under the CDBG program will receive their allocation directly from the federal government. Non-entitlement cities will receive funding through a state allocation process. Temecula, Marietta Menefee, and Lake Elsinore are all considered metropolitan cities and are slated to receive over $58 million for the southwest Riverside County region. The interim final rule has categorized the uses of ARPA funds into these four categories, which we'll explain in more detail in the coming slides. But it's important to note that these categories are mutually exclusive, and funding can be utilized in any one of the four categories, as long as the expenditures meet the eligibility criteria. The first category addresses the COVID emergency and its negative impacts on the economy. There's two subcategories to provide for funding for direct response to the pandemic and mitigate the economic impacts. Costs associated with COVID testing, contact tracing, and vaccine campaigns are all eligible expenditures in response to the public health emergency. The cost of public safety staffing, including police and fire, are considered eligible as our capital investments to public facilities designed to implement COVID mitigation tactics, such as improving ventilation systems. The second subcategory addresses the economic impacts of the pandemic and includes assistance programs to households and small businesses, payroll costs to rehire public sector personnel, as well as financial aid to the most impacted industries. A common theme throughout the guidance is to prioritize funding assistance to the communities disproportionately impacted by the pandemic, specifically including low-income households and people of color. The guidance utilizes qualified census tracts to determine eligibility for several types of expenditures, as noted here. The second category of funding is to provide premium pay for certain eligible workers performing essential work during the public health emergency, as listed here. The majority of these workers are private sector employees, and this category of ARPA funding allows for grants to third-party employers to provide these payments. Premium pay is limited to $13 per hour and cannot exceed $25,000 per eligible worker. The guidance suggests prioritizing payments to low-income workers. The third category of spending is broadly defined as government services and is limited by by the calculated amount of lost revenue a city has experienced. The guidance includes a formula to determine the amount of lost revenue, which essentially compares the anticipated growth in general revenues absent the pandemic to the actual revenue received. The formula uses a growth factor equal to the higher of 4.1% or the average annual growth in general revenue over the three full fiscal years prior to the pandemic. This growth rate is applied to the revenue received in what's called the base year, which is fiscal year 1819, then compared to the actual revenue received to determine the dollar amount of the lost revenue. It's a pretty complicated formula, and staff is still in process of calculating the city's amount applicable to this category of funding. Eligible uses within this category are very broad and are designed to avoid reductions in governmental services, as noted here. The guidance is very clear that ARPA funds in this category cannot be used to pay down any outstanding debt, satisfy any settlements or judgments, or replenish rainy day funds or other reserve funds. The final category of eligible funding is to provide investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, to improve access to clean drinking water, improve wastewater and stormwater infrastructure systems, and provide access to high-quality broadband service. Eligible water and sewer infrastructure can include projects to improve water quality, reduce water pollution, and create green infrastructure. The replacement of lead service lines, treating stormwater, facilitating water reuse, and projects that address climate change are also included. The COVID public health emergency underscored the importance of available high-speed, reliable, and affordable broadband coverage, as millions of Americans relied on the Internet to attend school and conduct work. Broadband infrastructure investments are designed to provide Internet service speeds at 100 megabits per second, with an emphasis to address those households and businesses that are currently unserved or underserved. While the list of eligible expenditures is very broad and somewhat up to interpretation, the guidance is very clear on the restricted use of the funds. ARPA funds cannot be deposited into pension funds or be used to reduce an unfunded liability that is accrued over previous years. Funds cannot be used to offset a reduction in tax revenue that resulted from a change in law, regulation, or administrative interpretation during the covered period. And finally, funds cannot be used as a grant match on federal programs who limit the use of federal funds. Unlike the CARES Act or FEMA reimbursements, the ARPA fund expenditures are prospective in nature and cover expenditures occurring after March 3rd of 2021 up through December 31st of 2026, with the exception for retroactive premium pay, which includes essential work beginning, from the beginning of the pandemic. Funds must be obligated prior to December 31st of 2024. While ARPA was signed into law back in March, it took a couple of months for the initial guidance to be released so that recipients, like the city, could fully understand the eligibility criteria and the restrictions for spending the funds. Several webinars have been available to explain the parameters. In fact, I just attended one this morning. And just this week, the League of California Cities released a tool to help calculate the revenue loss formula. All that being said, it is taking some time to fully understand this new funding program and to ensure that staff recommendations are sound and follow the guidelines. We've also been in communication with the city auditors to ensure that our interpretations are in line with theirs. In July, staff will present recommendations for appropriating the $14 million to the Strategic Fiscal Planning Ad Hoc Subcommittee. Then in August, the Subcommittee recommendations will be presented to the full City Council for consideration. The city will have until December 31st of 2024 to obligate the funds and until December 31st of 2026 to fully expend all the ARPA funding. Any remaining funds would need to be returned after 2026. The first interim report to the Treasury Department is due on August 31st of 2021, and then quarterly reports are required through the end of the award period, and all expenditures will be subject to the federal single audit process. So I'll now turn the presentation back over to Erin to discuss potential appropriation recommendations.
Thank you, Jennifer. Yeah, and I think what you're hearing is there's, there's really four tracks that cities and counties and states can go down to consider how they're going to spend this down or appropriate it. One, of course, is just sheer revenue loss, and that's kind of history, that's behind us. And then there's also many, many more ways looking forward in investments in infrastructure or programs or services that qualify with the guidelines of the Department of Treasury. So on the screen there are just, again, these are just ideas. These may or may not come before the City Council this summer, but examples of some eligible programs and services that could be considered. Homeless outreach, the city's made a substantial investment in walking alongside folks and in helping with street exits and in that program. Facility ventilation, for example, this room that we're sitting in required an upgraded investment in the filtration system, and that's something we're doing citywide with our facilities. The Old Town Dining Program has been a popular program for the restaurants out front. It doesn't all look the same. I think if that's a program that we decide, or the City Council decides down the road, we'd like to see that in perpetuity. There's going to be expenses associated with retrofitting and ADA and fees and much, there's a lot of expenses that might deter a restaurant owner from signing on and saying, yeah, I want to do that. So this program could potentially provide such grants to offset those expenses. Category two, you can see, we don't have anything, we likely will not have anything there for recommendation. Three, of course, public safety, as Jen mentioned, police and fire services, also code enforcement is a understaffed operation here, both on the reactive and the proactive side, and something that would be eligible. And then cybersecurity is an eligible program to be considered with, in today's day and age, unfortunately, we're spending a lot of time upgrading and protecting the city's network and protecting the city's system. And then, of course, some of the, some of the popular things that we are involved in, broadly speaking, would be affordable housing, broadband, as I mentioned, for affordable housing, maybe that currently exists within the city of Temecula. So these are just some samples, these are some ideas. As Jen mentioned, our hope is to kind of treat this like a mini-budget, that you all went through a very large budget earlier in the month. This would be a mini-budget where we would meet with the council, put together some staff recommendations, get feedback, and then ultimately, you know, back to the full council for review. The community, of course, would be privy to those hearings or those council meetings. And just to remind everyone, these are one-time dollars, and what you do with one-time dollars is different than what you do with ongoing revenue streams. So just being mindful of that. So with that, this was designed to be a receive and file and hopefully set the record straight a little bit and provide clarity, and Jennifer and I are happy to try to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions? Wait, Matt?
Just a real quick one. So the timeline, I don't know who to look at, timeline for this, it's retroactive for certain expenses back to 2020? No?
Only for the premium pay.
Premium pay.
All the other expenses have to have occurred after March 3rd of 2021.
And do we have premium? I don't, we didn't do premium pay, did we?
That would, that would be up to the council if they wanted to appropriate premium pay.
For private sector, correct?
Most of it's for private sector. It does include, you know, some public sector positions as well, but most of that would be in the form of grants to grocery stores or, you know, nursing homes, healthcare workers, things like that.
Okay, so then, so then it's March of this, this year forward for, and you have to have everything allocated by 2024?
Has to be obligated by '24, the end of '24, and expended by the end of '26. So for instance, if you have a big infrastructure-type project, you just have to have everything obligated and encumbered by...
So roughly a five-year window, then, is, okay. Okay, thanks.
So that, that fact in itself makes it difficult to use this money for something that, it is a very long-term project or that takes a long, long time, because we can't allocate the funds and then let them sit in the capital improvement budget, right?
Right, they would have to all be expended by the end of '26.
Okay, okay.
And I think the, Jen kind of mentioned this, but I think before we even brought forward any remote recommendations for consideration, we are going to get a professional opinion from the city's auditor, just so we're going down that, that path of, a good path for the future, because there will be a lot of record-keeping associated with federal dollars.
And Erin, residents can be involved in this process by?
They can email the council, they can email the City Manager's Office, they can participate in public meetings like this tonight. There will be these meetings, as you saw in the timeline, probably in July, August timeframe, and we would welcome input during those public meetings, but you don't have to wait for those meetings. You can simply email, phone call, write letters, and we will take that under consideration.
And we know this is not the final, final, so is there, where can, where could residents access the, the criteria? Is there an easy way to do that?
It's, yeah, it's available if you, if you go online and you just put in the American Rescue Act, U.S. Department of Treasury guidelines, you will find a 155-page link, and you can stay up all night and read that.
Yep.
Or you can take our Cliff Notes version, and we'll be happy to share that, the slides, with anyone that wants them.
Yeah, I think that's great. Okay, thank you. So this was a receive and file. Great job, Jennifer. Did you, okay, Matt?
One other quick one, sorry. So, you know, just to be clear, too, since this is a five-year program, I mean, it's kind of interesting, because I think there's, there's, I appreciate you clearing up some of the misconceptions here, but really what it accounts to is roughly, you know, if you were to take 14 million and divide it by five and equate that to our annual operating budget for the city, that's, what, two and a half percent of our annual operating budget?
Not much.
Roughly, you know, but, but also, since the funds could be directed toward other programs, not just city-related, but, you know, community-based as well, that cuts that percentage down even more. And so when we're talking about, you know, the costs of, of, you know, what the decisions that were made by the state or federal government, the impact, and I think a lot of folks mentioned that earlier, the impact, the financial impact to a lot of businesses, it sounds like a lot of money, but in, in reality, it's not, you know, and then when we really start to try and figure out what those priorities are for where we allocate those funds, not just to benefit the, you know, local businesses, but to provide for additional infrastructure and offsets for the city as well, you know, when you put it in the context of, you know, that sort of incremental, and then recognize what our revenue losses were over that time as well, you know, this isn't, like, we're not, we're not being made whole and we're not being, you know, enriched by this. I just, I kind of wanted to get that out there, is that, that's not what this, this really does.
No, that, that's fair. This is not a windfall. In, in the scheme of the city's annual operating budget, which we just approved and finalized, you know, a couple of weeks ago, was $90 million. The capital budget was north of $700 million. Again, those are one-time costs, so $7 million and $7 million is, is a very small percentage if we, if we deemed appropriate to spend it all on city costs. Now, if it's, there's a prerogative there to don't give it out to other agencies or businesses and things of that nature, yes, you're right, Matt, it would, it would go down even further, so.
And, and Erin, one more thing. How much money have we dispersed to businesses through the, through that grant program?
Yeah, last summer, we did a half a million dollars to businesses through the form of general fund, as well as the Community Development Block Grant. So those were $500,000 grants, not loans. We did that late last summer at the height of COVID. Then we also, on the heels of that, we launched another program for folks that were struggling with paying their mortgage or paying rent, and that was about $865,000 total program, and that is still up and running. There's still applications. If you know folks that need that, they can go to the city's website, fill out the application, and we'll continue processing that until we've expended that down.
And just to repeat, nobody has to pay anything back to the city?
Those are all grants, not loans.
Okay, thank you very much.
One quick thing, just so, just so I can make sure also. So I know we, there was about 300 and so on businesses that ended up closing, you know, this last year and a half, which nobody ever wants to see, so we'll definitely be able to help out those businesses, is that correct, if they were able to submit for that, for any of this money, or how does that work?
For money...
That's coming into the city.
This, this future?
Yes.
Well, we haven't decided what we're going to spend it.
That's what I'm saying, but that's still one of the options.
Yeah.
That 151 pages is the driest thing ever to read.
I'm sure you've memorized it by now.
Read it, it's fun. No, it's just, I was just curious to find out what that would look like for these businesses so they have availability to know what to bring to the council when this comes up to the table.
If, well, the easiest way for me to put it is, is if, if the City Council outlines a, another business grant program, community grant program, then there would be a opportunity, obviously, to advertise and solicit and accept applications and, and fund. That'll be up to the City Council to decide if that's a program and what, what are the strings that are going to be attached to federal dollars, and, and some folks don't mind jumping through all the federal hoops, and some folks would rather not take the money because it's a lot of work.
Yes.
So, but that will be something that'll be up for discussion.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Are we good?
One, one more quick thing, sorry. So just as a, you know, so Mary Ann, you and I are on the Subcommittee for this, but I would just ask that, because this is, you know, look, we're trying, you know as much as we know right now.
Yeah.
Okay? And as we move through the process, I'd like to keep it as open and transparent as possible, so maybe we could ask for two, two things. One is, you know, for the balance of the council while we're on the Subcommittee, we'll bring some recommendations forward, but any reports or presentations that you give, could you also give to the balance of the council at the same time?
Mm-hmm.
Just so everybody's sort of on the same page. I know it's asking a lot, but just so everybody's, you know, so you're not at that meeting when the recommendations come, playing catch-up to the work that we did in the background. So make sure everybody's on the same page. But the other is, as the decisions get made, too, and the recommendations, I know it will come out in staff reports and all of that, but we also have, I think we still have a page on the city's website related to COVID-19, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, so maybe we could provide, you know, updates on that page as well about, you know, sort of the city's process in this, to keep that as easily accessible and transparent as possible as well.
Yeah, absolutely. We can, that, that page has gotten a lot of use over the last year and a half, and so if you're familiar with it, it has all the financial assistance, both at the city level, the county level, state and fed, so we can use that as a public out-facing resource. And to your other point, absolutely, you guys know my style. While two members of the council will kind of run lead, I'm not going to leave anybody behind, and all five of you will be briefed individually, so I will be respecting the Brown Act. Peter Thorson's listening in. And no decisions will be made behind closed doors or in Subcommittee. The ultimate final decisions will be made in a venue just like this, with all five of you.
And with, with resident input as well.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Sure? Okay, thank you, everyone. That was very informative. So, Mr. City Manager, anything?
I think I said enough, that's it.
Okay. Peter, are you still there?
I am still here, and I did hear Erin, and I do appreciate Erin's comments, and we will hold him to that. I have no further report tonight. I apologize for not being able to make this meeting, I was so looking forward to it, and with any luck, I will see you at the next meeting, or at least the meeting right after.
Thank you, Peter. All right, so we stand adjourned.